Praise the Lord, everybody. Hallelujah. Amen. I'm so excited and elated, amen, to be in the house of the Lord one more time. Hallelujah. Woo! God is just so good to us. Amen. I don't know about you, hallelujah, but I'm excited to be here one more time in the land of the living, giving God glory, honor, and praise. Oh, hallelujah. Amen. Welcome to Praise by Nature Ministries here. Amen. I'm Pastor Anderson, amen, and we're getting ready to get into the Word of God today. Hallelujah. I mean, they're just excited and elated for what God is getting ready to do in our lives, amen, in your lives today. Hallelujah. Amen. We certainly want to thank everybody that is tuning in right now, that are on their way to be tuning in. Amen. Hallelujah. Oh, we just thank God for another day of all His glory, all of His grace, and all of His power. Amen. Y'all know the first thing that we've got to do, amen, when we are giving God glory, honor, and praise here today is we gotta give Him some praise up in here. Hallelujah. Come on now, we gotta give us some praise up in here. Hallelujah. He's been too good to us not to give Him some glory, honor, and praise. There we go. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. Amen. Brothers and sisters, we're getting ready to open up with a word of prayer. Hallelujah, this evening, amen. And I'm telling you, I am just so excited, amen, for tonight's lesson. Hallelujah. Amen. And wherever you're tuning in from, go ahead and give a shout out, amen. Give a praise the Lord. Give a hallelujah. Amen. We will certainly, I will certainly, amen, shout you back out. Hallelujah. Amen, because certainly the Lord is good and His mercy endures forever. All right, brothers and sisters, so let's go ahead and get into the Word of the Lord this evening, amen, and we'll go ahead and dig deep into God's Word and see what the Lord has in store for us today. Amen. Hallelujah. So let's go ahead and pray, amen, and we'll get into the Word of the Lord today. Hallelujah. Tell me, God is just so good to us. Father God, in the precious name of Jesus, amen, we just thank you and glorify you this evening. Amen. We thank you for your Word. We thank you for your power. We thank you for your grace and your glory. Father, we just ask you today, God, that you would speak through us tonight, Father God, that you would give us the grace, the glory, and the power tonight to learn your Word, to hear your Word, to respond to your Word tonight, Father God. Oh, God, we just glorify you right now in a, it just, we just glorify you right now in this place, Father God. God, take me out and you come in like a flood right now, God. We rebuke every system, every demonic system, every demonic stronghold, Father, that would try to come against us and try to set a trap up for us, Father. We rebuke it right now in the precious name of Jesus. God, we just declare that your glory shall and will be revealed tonight. Hey, God, in the precious name of Jesus, amen, we all say and pray, amen. And amen. Hallelujah. Amen. And amen. And what again? And amen. Hallelujah. So again, brothers and sisters, we want to welcome you, amen, to tonight's Bible study. Hallelujah. Amen. Tonight's Bible study, amen. Got some exciting news for you guys all today. Amen. Praise by Nature Ministries, we have, amen, just launched, hallelujah, our podcast. Hallelujah. Amen. Yay! Amen. We have just launched our first podcast, amen, and you can see our first episode, amen. If you simply go to our website, www.praisebynatureministries.com, or you can do the short tag, www.pbn.church, either one will get you there. Amen. But if you go there, you'll see a tab that says, PBN Podcast, at the top of your screen, amen, or scroll down a little bit, you'll see a button. Either way, when you see that, go ahead and click that, amen, and it will take you to our podcast channel, amen. Well, we have last week's podcast that is already ready, ready to go, amen, and also last week's notes, amen to God, or on that channel, amen. Hallelujah. So we are so excited, amen. God is doing great things. He is blessing us, amen, and we're just so excited to bring another layer of technology and another means and a method to deliver the Word of God, amen. So stay tuned, amen. We will be having our podcast posted on the Apple Network, the Google Network. We also be having it posted on the Spotify Network, amen. All of that is coming in due time. Hallelujah. Amen. But we got, we got over the first hurdle, amen, and that was actually getting edited and posted, amen. So for right now, you can go to our website, click on that PBN Podcast again, amen, and you can view that, amen, play that in the background while you're at work, amen, to God, or driving in the car. Hallelujah. So we want to thank you again for just being faithful to us, amen, and sowing into us, amen, and all that goes with that. Hallelujah. All right, brothers and sisters, so let's go ahead and get into the Word of God tonight, amen. You got your Bibles, I got mine, amen, and if you got your coffee, I got mine too, amen, or tea, juice, whatever it is, amen. We ready to go. Hallelujah tonight. Amen. So go ahead and turn with me to the book of Philippians, amen. Chapter three, amen, and we're gonna start, we're gonna read, amen, verses 15 through 21. But we're gonna actually start at verse 14 to kind of catch up, and then we'll go ahead and read that section, and then we'll have a conversation about that tonight, amen to God. So again, we're gonna start at Philippians, amen, chapter, um, chapter three. We're gonna start at verse, amen, 14. Hallelujah. That's where we're gonna be taking our text from tonight, amen. So let's go ahead and let's go ahead and read verse 14, if you please, real quick here. And verse 14 says something very critical here in the Bible. And what it says is, is Paul says something very critical here. He says that he is pressing towards the goal for the prize of the upward call of God in Christ Jesus. Amen. Again, Paul says that he is pressing towards, or we'll read it from the New American Standard Translation. He says that, "I press towards the goal for..." "...in Christ Jesus." Amen. I don't know about you, but "I press towards the upward call," amen to God, "in Christ Jesus." And so Paul here makes this claim very, very clear to us, amen, especially to me, because last week we really discussed, amen, where Paul was and what Paul was doing and the position he was in and the state of mind that he was actually in. And what we begin to see was, is that Paul began to tell us, amen, that it is imperative, and we went over this on Sunday and last Wednesday, but it's imperative for us to be in a position to pursue God, or I would say that we are in, we should be in pursuit of the prize of the upward call in Christ Jesus. I don't know about you, amen, but, 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 but Paul here is being very clear here. When, when he says that he is pressing towards the upward call, the prize of the upward call in Christ Jesus, he is in a position to obtain Jesus, obtain the goal, and he is in a position to pursue. And so press simply means to pursue, it's an activity. It means to carry out or participate in an activity. And so Paul says that "I am in pursuit of the goal of the prize." And again, the prize now is not just a reward, a earthly monetary reward, but the prize now is, amen, receiving eternal life with God. Hallelujah. And so he's saying that, "I'm not going to be held back by my past. I'm not going to be held back by the good, the bad, and the ugly of my past, of past failures, or even past victories. I'm not going to be held back by those things, but what I'm going to do is, I am going to put those, celebrate those things, learn from those things, but I am going to be in a constant position of moving forward. And because I'm going to be in a constant position of moving forward, my eyes now are not just fixed on what has happened to me, good or bad, but my eyes are locked in on obtaining a reward." In other words, and we can, we can liken this to an individual running a marathon or a race. And the, the whole point of you running the race is to finish the race, right? And you want to be in a position to actually win the race, because we know that when you win the race, you actually, you know, get a reward, whether it's money or something to that facet, right? But when you win the race, hallelujah to your name, right, you, you, you receive a reward. And so Paul is putting his language in a, in a phrasing to say that "I'm in position to win this reward." And one of the things that I want to remind you is that when you have the Holy Spirit on the inside, amen, when the Holy Spirit is active on, active in your life, God has not given you a spirit to be a loser. And what do I mean by that? He has given you a spirit that has already defeated the enemy, already defeated death, already defeated all of the haters that people have said, defeated every type of sin known to man. Remember, Jesus became all sin, but never knew sin. In other words, he defeated every trial and tribulation, every struggle, every habit, every addiction, every mind battle. He defeated all of those things, amen, and buried it in a grave. Hallelujah. And then he, when he resurrected from the grave, he resurrected with victory. In other words, he was victorious because death could not hold him down. And now it is that same spirit that is being disseminated upon us to say that if we stay true to the spirit, that the Bible says, right, that, 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 that the Holy Ghost is gonna lead and guide us into all truth. God has already set it up that His spirit is a spirit that wins, a spirit that reveals all truth, a spirit that corrects so that you can win. We serve a God, amen, and He has given us His spirit so that we can win when it's all said and done. I need you to understand that, that you and I are not losers in the things of God, but if we stay true to Him, in the end, we win. So in other words, we should, we should have the mindset that if I stay the course, I am going to win, and God has given me a spirit to win. Hallelujah. I am going to win the heavenly reward if I stay true to the things of God. Hmm. Hallelujah to your name. I win when it's all said and done. I win. I, hmm, I win. I win. I win in the name of Jesus. And so it's, oh, God, it, 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 it's very critical here that you and I grab hold of this so that we can understand that when it's all said and done, we are going to win. Amen. So now, what he also shows us in the text is, is that because he is pressing towards the goal of the upward call in Christ Jesus, he is also showing us that we should not put our trust in the flesh. We should not put our trust in the flesh, because when we put our trust in the flesh, we begin to put ourselves in a position to lose. And so he's already indicated this, amen, in Philippians 3 and 3, where he says, "For we are the true circumcision, who worship in the spirit of God and glory in Christ Jesus, and put no confidence or trust in the flesh." So Paul is saying, right, that in order to win this race, your full trust and confidence cannot be in your flesh. It cannot be in your spirit. It cannot be according to the terms of you. It cannot be according to the will of your mind, but it has to be according to the mind of God. It has to be according to the mind of His spirit. Amen. We put all trust in Jesus. Amen. We are not putting all trust in flesh, because flesh has a way of deceiving us. And that's what Paul went through in the latter part, in the beginning part of this text, where he really divulged something very interesting and then told us, amen, that, 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 that the flesh always has a moving target and that he was working for the flesh, and he did everything that the flesh wanted him to do, which was literally cruel to the house of God, but the flesh said, you know, "Hey, it's all good. Well done, brother. You did, you did right." So, so he, he shows us that it's imperative that you and I do not put our full soul trust in the flesh, but we put our full and soul trust in the spirit of God. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. So let's go ahead and read the passage of this evening, amen to God. And we're gonna start at verse 15, amen, and I'm reading from the New American Standard Translation here, amen. We'll, we'll read from there. And the scripture says, "Let us therefore, as many are perfect, have this attitude; and if in anything you have a different attitude, God will reveal that also to you. However, let us keep living by that same standard to which we have obtained. Brotherin, join in following my example and observe those who walk according to the pattern you have in us. For many walk, of whom I often told you, and now tell you even weeping, that they are enemies of the cross of Christ, whose end is destruction, whose God is their appetite, and whose glory is in their shame, who sets their minds on earthly things." 20 says, "For our citizenship is in heaven, from which we also eagerly wait for a Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, who will transform the body of our humble state into conformity with the body of His glory, but the extortion of the power that He has Himself to even subject all things to Himself." Let's tackle 15, y'all. 15 becomes interesting here, because the first thing that Paul tells us in verse 15, or what I begin to glean from in verse 15, is this. Paul is calling on those, the church, who are mature to have the same mindset. And that is to what? What is that to? Those that have this same mindset, amen, is to what? Agree that you have not arrived yet. Brothers and sisters, Paul said earlier in the text that he, he, he's not fully mature yet. He has not, quote unquote, "arrived" yet. That, that right there, brothers and sisters, amen, is something that you and I need to gravitate to. Paul himself says, "Hey, I have not arrived yet. I'm not where I want to be in Christ. I'm nowhere near close to where I want to be in Christ, so I haven't obtained what I have attained, what I, what I want to obtain yet." So you have to agree that you haven't arrived yet, really. You're not in the fullest mature state. It's not saying that you're not growing. It's not, I'm not saying that at all. But what I'm saying is, you can't walk around puffed up, or you shouldn't walk around puffed up, acting like you are all that in a bag of chips, or a sign, a wonder, a wonder, a sign in the things of God, where Paul himself is saying, "I'm not, I'm not that. I'm, I'm not that." Thank you, Lord. The second thing is, we have to, again, press forward and leave the past, the past, amen, the good, the bad, the ugly. Nobody's saying to forget it. That's not what, that's not what we're saying here. What we're saying is, and what I'm saying is, is that the past should not have a hold on you that would keep you from moving forward. That would, see, there are some of us that are dealing, some are dealing with the fact that the things that they have done, good or bad, have paralyzed them in a sense that they cannot move on with their life. Usually, we attribute this to folk that have experienced some tragedy, domestic violence, you know, death, you know, a very traumatic experience, you know, PTSD, some of those things, you know, just to name a few, where folk have experienced a traumatic experience to the fact where they're, they're stuck and they can't move on. So we attribute that to, to that, and, and sometimes that can put a stronghold, right, or a roadblock, amen, on the individual's life from moving forward. But it also goes to, to those that maybe have had victories in the past, and they just live off of the victories that they've won in the past. And so Paul is calling us in verse 15, right? Let us therefore have the same mindset. Let us therefore be mature with the same, you know, mentality. So that means that we have to learn not to let those things, good or bad, keep us hostage, keep us bound, amen to God. In other words, we had a, we, we have to have the, the spirit of to, to leave and don't look back. You remember what happened to Lot's wife in Genesis? I want to say it was Genesis, chapter 18, don't quote me on that, but quote me on the story of Lot's wife, where Solomon and Gomorrah was being destroyed, and God had told Lot and them to, to leave, and they were leaving, but he told them to leave and not to look back, right? He told them not to look back, but Lot's wife was curious. And what happened? She looked back and she turned into a pillar of salt, literally, right before their eyes, because she looked back. God told her not to look back, or them not to look back, but the curiosity of looking back, or maybe something back there was holding her to look back. Or maybe we don't know, something in our mind was saying, "Turn and look back." We don't know really why she looked back, but the scripture says that she looked back, and there's something, there was an outcome because she looked back. That means that we have to have that mentality that, man, it could be dangerous for us. We may not, quote unquote, turn into a pillar of salt, but something can happen when we continue to look back and not look forward. We're not looking for God to do a new thing. We're not looking for God to advance us. We're not looking for God to continue to make us walk on the path of winning. Praise the Lord, Sister Ravina. We're not looking, amen, forward. And so if we're not looking forward, I, I, again, I want to reiterate this. I want to reiterate this. If we continue to look back, right, and we continue to be held from victories, good and bad, it really, it really stops us from walking the path that winners walk. My steps are ordered in the name of the Lord. The steps of the righteous are ordered by the Lord. Amen. And if I follow His path, I'm following a winning path, a winning formula that's gonna lead me to eternity, to live with Christ for all eternity. So Paul is saying, "I'm, I'm focused on this path." He says, "The Bible says that Matthew narrow is the way, not broad. Narrow is the way." So another thing of maturity is, is that if we continue to look back, we, we can put God as number two instead of number one, so that He's not the major priority in our life. So what is interesting about this is that Paul says we have to be mature, right? We have to be focused on the now. We have to be focused on the winning path. Man, I'm, I, I, that's gonna be reoccurring throughout this text today. I'm probably gonna be talking about winning, amen, throughout this lesson today, because the Lord orders our steps so that you and I can win. We can win in our mind battles. We can win when we're down. We can win still because we have the Holy Ghost on the inside that can lead us and guide us back into all truth, that can pull us away when we're walking the wrong pathway, that can say, "Look here, bro. Look here, sis. You, you, you not where you need to be yet. Let me resurrect you. Let me reshape you. Let me reframe you, so I can put you back on the winning path." My God, the spirit of God that we have on the wind, on the inside is a winner. We win with Him. So then the second, the second phase, the second point to this, amen to God, is Paul tells us that if some of us have a different mindset, he says that God will reveal this to you. he says that God will reveal this to you. Didn't I just say? I just told y'all, we serve a true and living God. And I just told you that our God will lead and guide us on the path of victorious, to be victorious, on the path of winning. With Him, we're going to win. With God, we're going to win. Listen again to what he says. Listen again to what he says. Let's pull verse 15 back up again. Listen to what he says. "Let us therefore, as many as are perfect," "perfect" means mature, "have this attitude," right, "have this same mindset." And he says, "But there's a clause, but if any of you, any of you have a different mindset, if any of you have a mindset contrary to the mindset of God, if any of you have a different way of thinking, he says, "God will reveal that also to you." That's what's mind-bottling here. That's what's mind-bottling here, in a great way. We serve a God that searches the hearts and the minds of us. And if we stay connected to God, and we're going to read a couple of scriptures about revelations, God, how God gives revelations to us. But if we stay connected to the mind of God, and we stay connected to God, God will let us know when we have a mindset that is contrary, or we're just not on the right path yet. This is not, this, this, this text is, 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 is not just indicating somebody who is evil, but it could also, also have a meaning of somebody who is serving God, but doesn't, is not on the path of maturity yet. Is not on the path of going to perfection. They don't hate God. They don't, they don't dismiss God. They just don't know yet, right? But in either event, if my mind is different towards the standard, all I got to do is wait on God. Man, there's so many of us sometimes that are waiting for somebody else to bring us up. Are we waiting that we got to get everything now, 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 now? But as the Bible says, "Those that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength. They shall mount up wings like eagles, they shall run and not be weary, they shall walk and faint not." Brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, this tells me also that there is a, there is a time and a place for everything. This shows me that if I stay connected to God, purely, truthfully, dedicated to Him, there may come a time, amen, where He's going to have to reveal some things to me so that my mind can be made up on Him. Hallelujah to your name. I want to touch on the responses to revelations. And we're not talking about the book of Revelations, but we're talking about the sense of things being revealed. This has a synopsis, a type of meaning that, that the Lord requires and imparts a frame of mind that receives and responds to what He has made known. Paul is saying that if you're not there yet, God will make it known to you. If you're not there yet, and you have a different mindset, stay with Him. He will make it known to you. Oh, just because you didn't get an answer today, just because you didn't get what you needed today, does not mean that God will not make it known to you the next time you come to Him. Hallelujah to your name. Just because things didn't work your way, it doesn't mean that God will not make it known to you. We have to learn how to wait on the Lord. We have to learn how to trust on God. We have to learn that in due seasons, He is going to make everything known to us, if we just wait on Him. Oh, hallelujah to your name, Jesus. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. So the thing that he does here, the thing that he does here, the first thing is that the Lord commands that His word be heeded. If we want to have God reveal more of Him to us, and reveal Himself, and rearrange and reframe us, we as believers have to obey the word of God. Mark tells us in four and three, it says, "Listen to this. Behold, the sower went out to sow." Says, "Listen, the sower went out to sow." Uh-huh? Let's listen to, let's look at another scripture. The scriptures indicate here in Mark, that the believer went out and sowed. The sower went out and sowed. Isaiah 110 says, "Hear the word of the Lord." You rulers of Sodom, give ear to the instructions of our God, you people of Gomorrah. Hear the word of the Lord. Listen, which, as they would say in school, put on your listening ears to the instructions of God. Right? That's what's being said here. Mark four and nine says, famous verse that we hear in Revelations, and it says, "And he was saying that he who has an ear, let him hear." In other words, you got to have an ear to want to hear what the Lord is saying to the church, or to you per se. And if you have an ear to hear what the Lord is saying to you, then use that ear to respond to Him by obeying His word, meaning that now that you have some new insights, some new revelations, some new knowledge of Him, now is the perfect time to respond to what He's asking you to respond to. Hallel, oh, God, hallelujah to your name. Hallelujah to your name. Now is the time to respond to what He's calling you to respond to. Now is the time to move forward and do what God is calling you to do. He that has an ear, let him hear to what the Spirit is saying to the church. Hallelujah. The second thing, the second thing is, is that God has given His Spirit to illuminate the human mind. He has given His Spirit to illuminate our mind. And He does this in a couple of ways now. One of the first ways He does to illuminate our mind is He reveals and teaches truth. Ain't that something? He reveals and teaches truth. Paul said that if I have a different mind, than the mind that Paul is saying, if I have a different attitude, have a different mentality, contrary to what Paul is saying, if I'm going a different way, if, if, if I take He and I consecrate myself under the anointing of God, I consecrate myself, now I put, I get back in line, I start talking to Him, that if I stay consistent, He is going to reveal and going to teach me His truths, because remember, His Spirit does nothing but win. If we don't make it into heaven, it's not because of God's Spirit, it's because of us. Because the Bible says that the Holy Ghost cannot lie. It only speaks truth. It is us who doesn't hear, or it is us that has a hearing problem, but it's not the Lord and Savior. Corinthians, 1 Corinthians two, 12 or 13 says, "Now we have received not the Spirit of the world, but the Spirit who is what? From God, so that we may know the things freely given to us by God, which things we also speak, not in words taught by human wisdom, but in those taught by the Spirit, combining spiritual thoughts with spiritual words." Paul is saying that we have not received, and he says, "Now we have received not the Spirit of the world." We had the Spirit of the world when we were living in flesh. But because we've been born again of the water and of the Spirit, we now have the Spirit of Christ, right? The, we now have the Holy Spirit, the Spirit of Christ, which is from the Lord, which is from God. That's what Scripture says, right? That was given to us freely, so that now we, we, we speak things not by world, the words of human wisdom, right? We're able to now communicate and be taught by the Spirit, right? Because we have the Spirit which was freely given upon us. Look at what John says, 14, 16 through 17. It says, "I will ask the Father, and He will give you another helper, that He may be with you forever." That is the Spirit of truth, whom the world could not receive, because it does not see Him or know Him. But you know Him, because He abides with you, and you, excuse me, abides with you and will be in you. See what it's saying? The Spirit of truth, which would abide with you and will be what? In you. In, in that same chapter, verses 25 and 26 of John, it says, "These things I have spoken to you while abiding with you." 26, one of my favorite scriptures. It says, "But the Helper." We know this to be the Spirit, the Spirit of truth, which was just spoken to us in John 14, 17. It says, "But the Helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send what? In my name." Bible says that the Holy Spirit, He will teach you all things, and bring to your remembrance all that I said to you. Teach you all things. Bring you all things, bring all things he remembers of what Jesus has said to you, right? The Helper, winner, lead you and guide you into victory. We serve a God that's going to lead and guide us into victory. Another thing that, another way, amen, that God is going to illuminate us, amen, is He is going to reveal His mysteries to us through prayer for understanding. So not only are we going to have His Spirit lead and guide us, but there's going to be revelation from God through prayer. This is why Paul is saying, if you don't have the same mindset, it's okay. Because at some level, because he says God will reveal it to Him, to them, at some level, he realizes that some of them are going to seek God to get the revelation. At some level, some of us are going to put ourselves in a position to seek God and learn from Him. Y'all ain't hearing me here. Uh, yeah, He, He, He's going to put us in a, He understands that some of us are going to put the work in. We're not just going to take face value for face value. We're going to put some time aside, and we're going to put what I call sweat equity in. Right? We're going to have some prayer sessions. We're going to talk to the Lord. Amen, I'm not talking about just some corporate prayer. I'm talking about some individual prayer when it's just you and God, like the Yolanda Addo song, "Alone in a Room, Just Me and You," when it's just you and the Lord, and you and God are having some conversations. I'm telling you, that's when some of the best revelation is being revealed. And I'd be like, "Man, I can't wait to talk about it." But some of it is just for me. It's not for y'all, just for me. So you can get the same mindset, or you, your, your view of how you view things can shift through prayer. That's why Psalms 1, 19 and 12 says, "Bless are you, O Lord, teach me your statutes. Lord, teach me your ways. Teach me you." Isn't that what Paul is telling us? Isn't that what Paul has been educating us on and talking to this, this church? Have leadership, they have, they have leadership issues where they're not trusting, don't really trust their leaders, right? You know, you got some folk that are for God, some folk that are against God. What settles it all? Man, I got access to God myself. Lord, hey, God, teach me your ways. Teach me who you are. Teach me why I need you. Teach me why I need to live by you. Teach me why I need to walk with you. Teach me why I need to worship with you. Teach me how to have my mind to be, amen, stayed on you. Teach me how to fight the battles within myself. Teach me, Lord God, how to keep my eyes laser-focused on the prize. Lord, teach me. Teach me your ways. Teach me your will. Teach me your might. Teach me. Teach me, Lord. Hallelujah. In the same Psalms, 1, 19, 18 says, "Open my eyes, that I may behold wonderful things from your law." Lord, teach me. Open my eyes, so that I can see your words, so I can see how you do, how you do, what you do, how you do, what you do. Lord, open my eyes. Let me see the spiritual things that I need to see, because I didn't come this far to be on the losing side. I came this far to stay on the winning side. So Lord, whatever I, eh, God, whatever I got to do to stay on this winning side, Lord, teach me what I need to do to stay on this winning side. Psalms 1, 19, 27 says, and says, "Make me understand the way of your precepts, so I will meditate on your wonders." Lord, see, you see how the writer is saying, "Teach me. Open my eyes. Make me understand." God, if I, put it to me in a way where I can really grasp at it, make me understand your precepts, so that I can meditate. I can meditate on what you have illuminated to me. Hallelujah to your name. That's why Paul say, I think God is going to reveal that to you if you stay, if you stay with Him. If you stay close to Him. If you stay true to Him. Listen, let me, let me pause right here and, and talk to you for a second. Some may be out of whack. Some may, some, some of y'all may be not where you want to be with God. Maybe out of alignment with God. Maybe kind of circling the drain, quote-unquote, when it comes to the things of God. It doesn't mean that God doesn't love you, amen, but I tell you, if you go and you start talking to God and says, "Make me understand you. Teach me your ways. Teach me how to get back on track." I believe with all my heart that God will put you in a position to be back in right fellowship with Him. We're getting ready to talk about the consequences of revelations, the consequences of Him revealing things to you. And I'm telling you right now, you have a chance right now, hallelujah, to get back in line with Him, to get back in the saddle with Him, to get back, amen, doing what He called you to do. Hallelujah. Oh, hallelujah. You got an opportunity right now, right now. Listen. Listen to the consequences of responding to revelations. The first thing that happens is you've, you got to repent. Why do you repent? If the Lord is teaching you and making, and making you believe His ways, or showing you His ways, the first thing you going to see is, is what Paul came to grasp with, "I ain't there yet. I ain't where I want to be. I'm nowhere near close. Matter of fact, I'm so far off." Because when God reveals something to you, He shows you everything. He shows you everything. He shows you everything. Trust me. And that's when you start to measure up and you feel inadequate when it comes to the things of God. That's why Paul is saying, "Man, listen, I, I, when I want to do right, evil is upon me, right? He says, "There's a war in my flesh. There's no way in God's green earth." I'm going to say I have arrived when I know I haven't arrived. Every time I get close to God, He shows me there's still work I got to do within me. And it's always going to be this type of work, because we still live in a fleshly body. First thing, you're going to repent. That's actually your first step. That's how, that's your first step, acknowledging the wrong Ackno- that's how, that's your first step, acknowledging the wrong that you have done. Listen, this, this one is, this, in Acts 2, 38, this is, amen, even for those that, this is really geared towards, amen, those who are not believers, who have not been born again, it says repent. Peter says to them, repent, each, each one of you, right? Be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ for the forgiveness of your sins, and you will receive the gift of the Holy Spirit, right? If you are a sinner, never having a, never had a relationship with God, never giving your life to God, the first thing that you need to do is repent. You need to repent for the removal of your sins. You need to repent, amen, so that the Lord is forgiving you. And you need to be washed, hallelujah. You need to be cleansed from your old ways and come up a new you. Hallelujah to the name of Jesus, right? You need to be washed, hmm, hallelujah. Wash me, Lord. Glory, you need to be washed. Right? And you'll receive the Holy Ghost. But there's a, there's another thing here too. When Matthew says this, it says, "From the time that Jesus began to preach and say, 'Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand.'" This does not just mean those who are unbelieved. This also means those who had, who are on team Jesus, but have went astray or are doing things wrong. The whole undergird, the whole foundation of this is, this is urgent that you acknowledge the wrong, because the kingdom of heaven is at hand. Paul says, "I'm reaching towards the mark, the goal, the goal of the high calling." I'm reaching towards, amen, what we're calling the catching away of the saints. I wanna reign with him, but I can't if I don't at least acknowledge that I ain't where I need to be at. First thing I gotta do is I gotta repent. So then, the, 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 the second consequence, right? And I'm not saying this consequence in a negative connotation, really saying it in a positive light. But the second result of responding, responding to the word of God, responding to revelations, not, not, not only do you repent, cause you acknowledged the wrong as you do, man, something else happens. My faith then begins to increase. How does Paul say he's in a position? His faith in God had to increase. This just didn't happen overnight. He had some time with him. Of course, we know on the road to Damascus, that brother was blinded for a couple days, seeing what he had to go with him, but he still had to have some time with him. And still forever growing. Faith. Faith is key here. Bible says, in Romans 10 and 11, 10, excuse me, Romans 10, 17, it says, "So faith comes from hearing, and hearing by the word of Christ." Faith comes from hearing, and hearing the word of God. Corinthians, 1 Corinthians 2, 4 and 5 says, "And my message and my preaching were not in persuasive words of wisdom, but in demonstration of the Spirit and of power." Verse 5 says, "So that your faith would not rest on the wisdom of man, but on the power of God, on the ability of God." Faith! Man, when, when you get a revelation, let's just, let's just take it, um, you know, from a, from a secular perspective. Man, when you get an ideal, or you get a revelation, or you learn something, or you get an insight, your, your, your faith in that matter, your confidence level boosts up. Why? Cause you gained some knowledge in the area that you didn't have before. And so your confidence level goes up. Your faith to know that, it's like you're trying to learn something, and now that you know how to do it, you're more confident in presenting it, you're more confident in doing that task at job or at the house, or, or wherever you at, you have more confidence, you have more faith, because something has been revealed to you. And now that it has been revealed to you, cause you've been taught it, now your faith to accomplish that task increases. It's the same way. The closer I get to God, the more, the, the, the more I spend with God, the closer I get to him, my faith is going to continue to increase, cause he's constantly revealing more of himself to me, so that I can continue on the same pathway, so that I can continue to walk the straight and narrow path. Your faith is gonna increase. The other thing that happens, one of the consequences, is, man, you start to be obedient. You start to be obedient. Romans 1 and 5 says, "Through whom we have received grace and apostleship, to bring about the obedience of faith among all the Gentiles for his name's sake." That was Romans 1 and 5. Philammon, Philammon 21 says this, "Having confidence in your obedience, I write to you, since I know that you will do even more than what I said." What is the result now? The result is because my, because I repented, my faith increased. And now that my faith increased, me being obedient to God, and staying true to this word, I'm gonna do that now. Why? Because I've went through this process now. I've seen God work, I've seen him work signs and wonders. I've seen him talk to me, I've seen him resurrect me, I've seen him rearrange me. I've seen my love for him grow stronger and stronger. You know, as you, the more you spend time with him, your love for him grows stronger. It's no different than me and Mary. Like me and my wife, we've been together 20 years. And my love for her grows stronger and stronger each day, because I, I've spent that time with her, getting to know her, she getting to know me. So my love for her grows stronger and stronger, because I'm constantly spending time with her. Right? The more you start to spend time with God, your love for him is gonna grow stronger and stronger and stronger. And you're gonna want to be pleasing in his side. You're gonna wanna please him, you're gonna wanna do his will, you're gonna wanna live with him for all eternity, right? These things are kind of, are moving parts that come together, all because you have the audacity to say, I may not be, my mind, my mentality may not be where it is right now. But man, if I stay true to God's word, he gonna bring me there. Can I encourage you? Can I encourage you before we move on? You may not be where you think you are, where, where you think you wanna be at in Christ. Trust me. We all been there, we all got that same t-shirt. But one thing is, one thing is true. If you continue to stay with him and stick it out, man, God's gonna reveal some things to you, and your faith is gonna increase from faith to faith, and from glory to glory. All you've got to do is stick it out. All you gotta do is be willing to say yes. That, that's it. Just say yes. I'm, I'm willing to stick it out. I'm willing to stay with God. I am so willing to be with him. I'm so willing. I am, ooh, ooh, I'm so willing. Why? Because the reward is greater on the other side. Listen, don't let nobody put you in a box and talk you down, because you don't know what they know. There was a time where they didn't know what they know. And, and you're not trying to measure yourself against somebody else. Your measuring stick should not be somebody else. Well, I gotta get to his level or her level, because then I'm gonna be with God. I'm gonna be able to see God how they see God. No, 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 no. You wanna get to, you, you, you wanna just continue to grow in the things of him. You wanna continue to just let God grow you and let God groom you. My goodness, you don't wanna be in competition and trying to get to a level of man. No, you, you, eh, let's be true, let's be real. You may not know what that man or woman went through to get to where they at. They may have sold their soul to the devil, and you don't even know it, cause you just looking at signs and wonders. They could be, they could have done everything right too. But it's not a, it's not trying to look up to be like them. You wanna be like God, you wanna be like who God called you to be. You wanna be, eh, eh, if that was the case, then we would have the same fingerprints. But each one of us has a unique identification marker. Each one of us has a unique DNA, unique hair follicle, unique fingerprint. It is uniquely designed by God, so that he wants you to be as authentic as your fingerprint. Right? So you're not trying to be like Paul, you're not trying to be like Moses, you're not trying to be like Adam and, 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 and Joseph and all of these. You're trying to be like you, amen to God, and you let God groom you, let God grow you. Even if you're not where you think your mind should be at, man, if you stay with God, ooh, will, God, ooh, will he bring you to the other side? You gotta learn to stay with him. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Glory to your name. So one of the key points. One of the key points here. One of the key points is to have patience and let God reveal his people. Let God reveal to his people in his timing, which we just, which we just written, what we just talked about. Some scripture kinda backed that up a little bit. John 6, 25 says, "It is written in the prophets, and they shall all be taught of God. Everyone who has heard and learned from the, from the Father comes to me." It is written, again, I'm gonna read it, "It is written in the prophets, and they shall be all taught of God. Everyone who has heard and learned from the Father comes to me." My goodness. It is written. They shall be taught by God. Ephesians 1, 17 says, "That the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give to you a spirit of wisdom and revelation in knowledge, in the knowledge of him." Thessalonians tells us here, "Now as to the love of the brethren, you have no need for anyone to write to you, for you yourself are taught by God to love one another." Amen, we, we may have to pick up and have a conversation just on what it really means to be taught by him. What it means for us to be taught by him. Man, Paul is laying it out thick here, y'all. Amen, y- y- y'all know here, amen, we tend to take our time. We wanna make sure that we get some of the nuggets out that Paul is trying to, um, that the Lord is revealing to this ministry, and to the, and to the greater, um, body of Christ. Amen. God will reveal to you in his time what you need to be successful and be on the winning team, or stay on the winning team. Amen. And that we will be taught by him. Man, there are people in the Old Testament that wish that they had, they were able to be taught by the lips of God himself. Right? And we're being taught by the lips of him through the Holy Spirit. Hallelujah, that's what the Bible says. Right? The Holy Ghost is gonna lead and guide us into all truth. We're being taught. We're being taught. Being taught. Paul says here in, in 16. Amen, and we're gonna wrap up here in 16 here. Amen. He says, "However, let us keep living by that same standard to which we have obtained." As we begin to close this, uh, this lesson tonight, there's one thing that was put into my spirit. And the thing that was put into my spirit was this. We have to hold the line. He said us, he said, "Let us keep living, living by that same standard." We gotta hold the line. What does this mean? This means to agree on a position conceived of as being in proper battle formation with other soldiers. He says, "Let us keep living by the same standard," right? To we, we have attained. Let us continue to be in formation, let us continue to agree on the position. So he's challenging the, the Roman church to agree on that position and hold that line. Hold that position that I'm gonna keep pressing towards the mark of the high calling. He's told us what the position is. Right? He's already indicated what the position is. The, the position is to continue to move forward. The, the position is to keep reaching forward to what's ahead, to not be held back on what the past was and what it has, right? That's why I keep harping on this, and, and we, I keep regurgitating, regurgitating this, because the, the city of Philippi, amen, is going, was going through some turmoil. Right? I mean, it was going through a church split, church was already split. People's loyalty was already split. Their minds were already split, things were already happening. Right? So this is not, this is not, this is why he's saying, we have to, as he's telling the body of Christ, we gotta agree on the line. We gotta agree on this line, and we gotta hold, we gotta hold the line. We gotta, we gotta want to agree, we gotta agree on this standard. We're gonna move toward, we're gonna move forward. I want you to think about this, I want you to think about this in your mind. Think about somebody that you held as high esteem in the church. Amen, my father said, amen, Deacon Anderson said, the messengers Bible says, "Now that we are on the right track, let's stay on it." It's exactly right. Now that we on the right track, let's stay on it. I want you to, I want you to think about that. He's had to push everybody back on the same mentality. But imagine, 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 right? You have somebody that you held in high esteem, and they kinda, you know, you looked up to them, and they just went, they went rogue. And they convinced you to go rogue, and now, now that Paul is preaching this word, and this word is giving you life, and, and now all of a sudden, God has revealed something to you, now it's, now you gotta let go of that, that hurt and that pain and that, and, and that, and that, uh, 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 ugliness that you feel on the inside, all that rage, you gotta let that go, and you now gotta stay on track. You gotta hold the line, you gotta stay on track. You gotta stay on track. That's what he's telling us here. You gotta stay on track, you gotta agree, let's agree, let's agree to stay on track. Let's agree to move forward, let's agree not to let what happened cripple us. Man, let's stay on track, let's move forward. Right? He's already said the precedence. The precedence is already said through this scripture, amen, we have litigated this so many times. It's time to move forward. I like what, um, Galatians says here. Galatians tells us here in 5, 25, says, "If we live by the Spirit, let us also walk by the Spirit." If we live by the Spirit, let us move and walk by the Spirit of God. Right? We've gotta hold on to the progress that we made in Christ and continue to move forward. Man, that's, that's a message right there in itself. Romans, uh, 15 and 5, last scripture, amen. I got more, amen, but, um, there's this thought, amen, that we have discussed, that it is warranted that we chew on and listen to again, and just continue to get that into our spirit, amen. Romans 5, Romans 15 and 5 says, "Now may the God who gives perseverance and encouragement grant you to be of the same mind with one another according to Christ Jesus." Ooh. Ooh. Hold the line, let's be unified, one another with Christ Jesus. We're gonna see in chapter four that Paul has to talk about these two sisters that went out of the same mind. And these two sisters had to work with him. He mentions those two sisters, and he also mentions Clement. Right, these were all field workers with him, that worked with him for some time, and there was some disagreement, there was a disagreement. And he's saying, help them to be on the same mind, man. Be, be of the same mind, persevere, encourage me. It says, "Now may the God who gives you perseverance and encouragement grant you to be of the same mind with one another according to Christ Jesus." Man, I can't tell you, I can't tell you enough. Whoo. It's time to be on the same mind, it's time to be on the same spirit, same spirit. It's time to persevere, amen, it's time to stay focused and move forward. As the world agenda continues to be what the world agenda is going to be. You can't blame the world for doing what the world is supposed to be doing. The world is supposed to be advancing more and saying, it's just gonna, it's just gonna happen. It's just gonna continue to happen, but there's something that you can do. You can stay with Christ Jesus and not get sucked into that. Oh, and through the help of his spirit, oh, you can stay forward, you can move forward in the things of God. You can hold your position and hold your ground. Even the people do you dirty inside the sanctuary, you can hold your position, hold your ground in the things of God. Right, he's encouraging us, he's motivating us. Man, you got the spirit of God on the inside, you got a winning spirit. A spirit at the end of the day that is not going to lose. Right, the devil is gonna lose when it's all said and done. But the spirit of God, oh my gosh, the Lord, he's not going to lose. Victory, he's already defeated the enemy, and he's already given you authority to resist the devil. He's giving you something. Amen, that even some of the old time, uh, testament people couldn't do. They could have stand to flat footed and resist, but he said that you can resist. You can resist him and he will flee. Because greater is he that is in you than he that is in the world. You have something that is in you that is victorious already. You're already victorious because you have been disconnected from the, from the sting of death, disconnected from the world system. You have a winner on the inside, Jesus Christ is a winner. Oh, every battle that he fights, he's victorious. He's never lost a case, he's never lost a battle, hallelujah to your name. And will never lead us to astray. Oh, we've got a winner on the inside. But the sisters, I encourage you, amen, to go back, listen to this, amen. In the next couple of days, I'll be posting, amen, this is, it's already live on YouTube, but again, if you wanna subscribe to our podcast, amen, we, I got last week's Bible study up there, amen, so I'm gonna work and edit this and, and get that up there. Amen, but we wanna thank you for tuning in, amen, and we wanna go ahead and, uh, close with a word of prayer. Father God, we just thank you right now, in the precious name of Jesus, that God, the word that we have just heard, that God, it would speak volumes to our life. And that we would take heed to the word, and that we will move forward in the things of you. And that God, that if we are wrong in certain areas in our life, God, that we would acknowledge the wrong that we have done. Amen, so that we can move forward and be victorious in you. Father God, that we are praying right now that those that are hung up on something, or, or, or are hung up on something that has a hold on them, that we rebuke that and, and reject that and renounce that in the name of Jesus. And those that are caught up in false, uh, religions and false hopes and false lies, God. Uh, God, we just denounce it on their behalf and pray against it in the name of Jesus, that the eyes will be set free, their mind will be set free. Oh, in the name of Jesus. God, we give you glory, honor, and praise today, and we bless your wonderful name, Father. Oh, God, just give us the heart that we need to move forward. Lord, we love you, in the precious name of Jesus, we all say and pray, amen. Again, brothers and sisters, we wanna thank you again for tuning in, amen, and we will see you here at 10 o'clock, amen. Uh, we'll be opened up with a word of prayer here before we start our service here, amen. Praise by Nature Ministries located in Rancho Cordova, California, 9812 Old Winery Way, Suite Number 6, amen. And if you would like to sow a seed into our ministry, you can certainly do that by going to our website at www.pbnministries.com and press the giving button. You can certainly text us at 916-545-1284, amen, and just put the word give in there, amen, and you'll receive instructions on how to sow. So until then, be blessed, and we will see you on Sunday, Lord willing.